On January 15th, 2016, we post notifying the press to follow Wisconsin statute 19 dot 84. Is there a safety message out there?
Sure.
Please.
So, safe winter walking, being mindful of how we and where we and what we do in the winter when it's icy. What kind of shoes are we wearing? I like to wear shoes that match my outfit, and I don't always put boots on first when I go in the, walking on the ice. So, I will walk in with my heels, and when it's icy, that's a concern. So, be mindful of your shoes, and dress shoes kind of can be slick. So, make sure that you're being cautious when taking your steps on ice and, and wear your boots, and then put your pretty little shoes on in the morning when you come in. So, that's the safety message for today.
Thank you. Anybody else want to add something else?
Can't top pretty little shoes.
Okay, while we're back to more discussion about our benefit scenarios, and with us, we have one of the dynamic duo from our consulting group. So, we will, do you want to start with something that you want to read? Tina, this question, you know, what is?
I'll go to Tina's first.
Well, I guess what we took from the meet and confer were some different ideas, including ER and how does that affect our costs, as well as looking at plan design and contribution. And as we looked at the plans, there were multiple reactions and multiple things that people were coming up with and more ideas and, and that were coming forward. So, David and I, and Al and I have had conversations about what exactly does it all mean and how can we make different little changes? So, David was going to just bring forward some, just clarifications on the minutia versus the bigger picture. As our consultants, we've had some conversations about different pieces that have come across the table in conversations. So, from 1% contribution changes to ER changes to plan design. So, we're just going to kind of talk that out a little bit and let David clarify for you if you have further questions or ideas as far as moving forward with scenarios.
So, let's talk about the ER co-pay. An office call might cost $125, call it $175, $180 with lab and x-ray, depending on what services there are. The co-pay is $25 currently. The reason to do a co-pay change on the ER is because it's not necessarily a cost shift. In a cost shift, you're shifting cost to employees. In a true cost shift, you're shifting cost to employees where there's not necessarily a corresponding or direct correlation to reduction in utilization. So, let's say that you change the ER co-pay from 25 to 150. There's events that don't happen, meaning those ER visits don't happen. If it's a minor co-pay, $25, you might get utilization at an ER with an ear infection that could wait until the next day. So, if you put in a larger co-pay, those events don't happen, which reduces utilization. Now, from a cost standpoint, from an actuarial standpoint, that might be a quarter percent, maybe a third of a percent, not a significant change in overall costs. But it's not, it's a, I'll call it a smart benefit change because it's not a direct, in every case, a shift to employees. The drug co-pays can be significant depending on what those changes are. You currently have a three-tier co-pay, meaning a $10 co-pay for generic name-brand formulary $30 and non-formulary $60. What's coming into the market, or what's been in the market is a four-tier co-pay. And that four-tier, that fourth tier would be for specialty medications that cost significant dollars. And the reason to do a specialty co-pay, and I'll use this by example, is if you, if you have MS, there's a drug on the marketplace that costs $6,000 a month, okay? It will help anyone with MS. It's a progressive disease. The reason that employers put, where plans have a larger co-pay for specialty drug is because it delays the individual from going on that drug. Typically, a co-pay for prescription drugs in a fourth tier might be as high as $200. That particular co-pay is not necessarily, it's, it's partially a shift in cost. It's also to get the person to think about that medication before they go on it. Other, the unintended consequences, there's many specialty drugs that are life-saving. If you have cancer, a specialty drug might cost $7,500 bucks for a month's supply.
How much?
$7,500.
I heard that right. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And the reality is the person, you know, they're going to die sooner or die without taking the medication. So, you have some, some unintended consequences there. The trick with specialty drug co-pays is you want people to take those drugs because it keeps them out of the hospital. It, it reduces utilization in other areas. It saves people's lives. But the trend is to put in a specialty co-pay. Overall, we have five, six plans, including the current plan design on the table. If you go deeper into, you know, you have a 250 deductible 100% plan, a 250 deductible 80% plan, a $500 deductible 100% plan. You get into deeper, you know, slicing of the numbers, and now you're really into the minutia. What I think the board should focus on, and the benefits committee should focus on, in my opinion, is to focus on big picture and what direction you want to go. It's not a matter of, is it a $250 co-pay, or is it $150 co-pay? You know, the difference between the two is a half a percent, maybe three-quarters of percent, which in, if your true objective is to save $1.5 million, then there's dramatic benefit changes that have to happen. And what I mean by dramatic, it's relative, right? Going from $100 deductible to a $500 deductible, 80/20 is a dramatic change. Going from 90% employer contribution to 85% employer contribution is a dramatic change from where people are at today. So, my suggestion is focus on big picture and where you want to go.
So, changing the, for example, the emergency room co-pay increase there might net $30,000, give or take, I mean, that area.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, now.
It all counts, but it's not 1.5 million.
Correct. The, the decrements that are created here are AFG's decrements. They're created by our actuary. The carriers, we have not requested plan design from the carriers. The more confusing it is to a carrier from a pricing standpoint, you know, there's literally thousands of plan designs that you could request. The, I mean, as an example, you could go in a direction that says, you know, forget about the deductible. Go with an offices at co-pay. So, everybody pays every time they go to the office calls of $25. You could take that a step further and say it's $25 for primary care and 50 for, for specialty care. You could have co-pays for hospitalizations. You could have co-pays with limits, limitations on hospitalization. So, you could have $100 co-pay up to three co-pays in a year, or you could have a $250 co-pay. There's lots of directions that can happen. These are just examples of plan design.
Dave, if, let's just, for discussion's sake, say that we wanted to obtain X dollars of savings through premium share changes and another Y dollars of savings through plan design. Would it make sense then to go to the carriers and say, if the goal is to reduce this percent of the cost of the care, not the premiums, but whatever, where would they propose a plan? In other words, if, rather than just keep saying, well, what if you change this, change this, change this? Have the seller of the plan say, we recommend this overall because of our experiences, what have you? I mean, if I'm doing a telephone thing, they say, you know, rather than having 5,000 back and forth questions, okay, I understand what you want to do. Here's the bottom line. Here's what I recommend doing. Would that make sense ever? So, it's their plans versus us tweaking their own plans?
So, let me put it in your world.
Okay.
If, if I came to you and said, I want to save 20 bucks a month on my cell bill.
Right.
You're going to come up with a proposal?
I don't do cell phones, but yes, right.
Okay.
Yeah.
What do you do?
Phone systems.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Not much.
Landline.
Landline.
Okay.
Well, yeah.
Okay, okay, okay. I want to save 200 bucks on my leasing charge or whatever.
Right.
If I came to you and said, I want this phone, and I want the price to be this.
No. I'm saying, we're trying to save this because I know more about phones, so of course, you're typically, you're a consultant here now, so I guess that's a step.
My suggestion is say, we want this plan designed, and we want the price to be this.
Okay. All right.
Steve?
Which takes me to the conversation we haven't had until last week, when we had the meet and confer. I had a staff person talk to me after that said, what did the district pay last year? And we paid 9,845,000 towards the plan. And they said, okay, you can't, can you afford more than that? And I said, no, we don't have more than that. We're looking at savings. They said, well, if you stay with that plan, it was a balanced budget last year. Are there things you can do? Which is the same conversation I had with a business leader a week ago, who said, last year's budget was balanced. This is what you put into healthcare. If you put 9,845,000 into healthcare, the board needs to come to an agreement that we can't afford to spend more than 9,845,000 on healthcare in 1617. If you start with that number, then the staff can say, all right, well, that leaves us with OPEB and raises for our other staff that we need another $2 million. Where do we come up with that other, yeah, two, two and a half? Where do we come up with that, that money? And it could be through benefits. It could be through staff cuts. It could be through any number of things. But until we reach an agreement that we're not going to pay more than we paid last year as a premium from the, from the Board of Education and the district toward healthcare, we're doing, really, Dave and the, and the carriers are disservice because we're saying, we have 12 plans, now we have six plans, now we have 6.3 plans, now we have, you know, and you're just moving the chairs. And, and that's not helpful unless we come up with, to balance the budget, which is our job, we can't spend more than 9,845,000 because we know we're getting an estimated million dollars from the state in aid in 1617. And we know that through the PPS plan, depending on who you ask, it's somewhere between 1 and 1.4 million. So, that's a wash. That's, that's increase in state aid is going to take care of that. It won't take care of increased energy costs or anything else. So, in my opinion, until we come to an agreement as a board that we can't spend more than that, we don't need to hold any more meetings, frankly.
If we can't spend more than, sorry, thank you. I would like to see the numbers if we would have converted the ER visits to regular doctor visits or visits to urgent care. And also, we're forgetting about the, the healthy employee program. If you make it mandatory for participation, there's going to be a savings there. So, I would like to see the numbers. What would we be saving if these two small things, instead of all of those? This, this probably should have been one of the, the options we were looking at. You, you take your current plan, and then you just make those small changes. I would like to see actual numbers like you've provided with those other plans. Additionally, we, I reviewed the contract, and the contract is only a 12-month contract. We don't have to renew with them. We have the option to terminate, and maybe we should go looking at new providers that are going to provide us with something that's not going to be this. See those different scenarios. I mean, I think we need to slow our roll a little bit and, and look at these, these other options before we jump into something. Sometimes, small changes can make a big difference. If this would have reduced the bottom line by X amount of dollars, then, then that really is, is a savings. There, there are other things out there. Currently, if somebody, with the plans that we have now, if somebody goes out of state, what is their coverage? Do they have no coverage, or is it out of network, or how does, how does that work?
They would go into an ER situation, that would be covered. Outside of that, it would be out of, out of network.
Okay, so.
To clarify, if, if you're with the point-of-service plan, and you're out of state, and you see a participating provider out of state, then the in, in-network coverage would apply. If you're with the HMO, which a majority of the people are, then emergencies would be covered as if they were in-network. And the best example that I can think of is you break your leg in Colorado while you're skiing on vacation. The emergency room, the casting is all going to be covered. Let's take it a step further and say you want rehab while you're in Colorado because you're, you're there for two months. That's not, generally not going to be covered under an HMO scenario.
Well, there's, there are little things like getting, you know, a sinus infection and things like that, that, you know, is actually a waste of money when you would go to the ER. Yes, it would be covered. I shop around for things when I'm, you know, for my healthcare, even though the county is self-insured, I, you know, and, and we have nice insurance, I still shop around. I want to get the best bang for the buck. So, you're in Colorado, you get a wicked sinus infection, ear infection, you go to the ER. That is something that a primary care physician could have handled, and so, that, you're, that's like extra money that's not covered. So, I think the, the little things are probably, probably more apt to happen than, than the big things. And that's a concern too for employees. You know, people do take vacations and, and stuff happens, and I, I just, I don't think we're looking at all of the options that, that we could be. So, is there some way to, to crunch these numbers so I can see that? I mean, would you like to see those numbers? And, you know, am I the only one, or does anybody else want to see them?
Well, if I understood your first comment, those things such as the ER change, we're talking $30,000 is a, is a yes. I'm not saying it's not important, but we're looking at minimum 500, perhaps we'll discuss 1.5 million, whatever it's going to be. Those other tweaks, why maybe important, are not the crux of this discussion. It's how do we get to a half million? So, if, if we're at 445, and we got to get to half million, okay, extra $30,000 here, we can do that. But those changes are very, very minor as far as overall cost versus the, the big ticket items.
I would, I would like to see the numbers. I just, I'm, I'm a visual person, so it's something that I would like to see. And then, also, not renewing the current contracts. I mean, if, if, if your job is to, to get us the best deal, and you're representing us, then, then we need to find something that's going to fit into this scenario. I know it can be done, and we need to see those actions. I think, I think these are one area, but I think, I think we need to go, go bigger. I mean, it's, it's going to impact everybody's bottom line, so we need, we need some, some big time.
So, let me address some historical numbers. So, the district was self-funded. From a projection standpoint, we were projecting an increase of cost of about $5 million. Dean and Mercy, the marketplace is such that Dean and Mercy, with their respective provider organizations, have deeper contracted pricing, meaning they have deeper discounts. So, what transpires in the marketplace in a provider-owned insurance company world, they self-deal. What I mean by that is they give themselves deeper discounts than they do with anyone else. So, we went from self-funding, saved $5 million in that equation. We certainly can go to market again and look at alternatives. I'll tell you in advance that it's unlikely that anyone is going to be able to match or even come close to these numbers.
Well, then, the Mercy and Dean need to, to sharpen their pencils and, and figure something out. I, we need to see. We need, we need to pose these questions.
Sure.
Good morning. Thanks for being here so early. Again, everybody, but, so, I need to make sure I understand our agreement or our contract with our two providers. I, I was on the assumption, and I have said that we had a three-year contract, so that's not completely true. So, we have a three-year agreement that includes one-year options at a time. Is that?
Technically, that's a one-way street, meaning the district can terminate in any given month, right? You, as an employer, and the way the laws were, are, you could terminate at any given month.
Okay.
So, technically, it is not a three-year contract. It's technically not a one-year contract. You could terminate at any point. The, the contract, from the carrier's standpoint, they put rate guarantees in place, which means they can't exceed 5%. 5% in Dean's case, assuming that health assessments happen. And in the case of Mercy, it's 5% 5% for Dean, assuming those health assessments happen. And it's 8 and 10 in the case of Mercy. So, those are one-way streets, if you will.
So.
You could, you could walk from the contract next month. Now, we wouldn't advise to do that. It's the middle of the year, you know, that, you know, that, from a practical standpoint, that doesn't make much sense.
Of course. And then, knowing that, the three-year agreement, Mercy and Dean says, you know, let's work, let's work together on a three-year agreement, and we're going to have these rate caps. That's part of the, the agreement. But we could get out anytime we want. Okay, that's, so, is there though, the option of saying, Dean and/or Mercy, you know, we're considering going to one provider. What do you think about that? That's an option?
Absolutely.
It's an option. Is that a good one or not? That's, then we go through all, treading that water about the population that's at Mercy and/or at Dean, go through all that grief, and you don't know.
Additionally, we have to look at the long run, okay? So, let's, let's talk about that as an option.
Okay.
Okay? So, we go to both Dean and Mercy and say, guys, we're going to one carrier. We don't, and I'm making this stronger than it is.
Sure.
Right? We don't care about which people, which people are going to which provider. We don't care.
And that's what you'd be saying.
We're interested in price, right?
Yep.
Okay? So, we execute that, and let's, for, for illustrative purposes, we say that we move the business to Dean because they have the best price, okay?
Okay.
So, people move from Mercy to Dean, and they accept that in time, and ultimately, people would accept that in time, okay? Now, all your business is with one carrier, right? So, three years from now, we want to go to market again, and we're saying we're moving all the population to Mercy? What's the likelihood of that happening, and what price point does it need to be to execute that, that decision? So, Dean comes in, and business moves to Dean, and we have another sweetheart deal, and after a period of time, Dean comes in, and they're, they're, they offer a 10% renewal, and Mercy comes in and says, you know, hey, we want your business. We'll do it for seven. For three points, three percentage points, is it likely that you're going to move the business and everybody has to change their provider relationship? Is it three points? Is it four points? Is it five points? At what point do you move the business? Today, with a dual carrier situation, we have them competing for the patients on an annual basis. And it's not the insurance companies that are competing, it's the provider organizations, right? So, instead of dealing with, you know, I mean, let me throw some names out by example. So, let's say that Blue Cross or WPS, United Healthcare, you name the carrier, their contracted pricing with the carriers isn't as tracked, is not as attractive or as deep a discount, and they have to live by those agreements. The advantage of dealing with the provider-owned insurance companies is that the providers are competing and not just the insurance companies. Does that make sense?
Makes, yes.
That's not, that's not to say that in the short term, that it would not be advisable to go to a single carrier. There's advantages to going to a single carrier, right?
And like, like my fellow commissioner says, the providers will see because employees will actually with their feet determine where they're going to go.
Sure.
And we could be addressing some of this this year, right?
Sure, absolutely.
If Mercy goes more than, you know, anyway. And also, over time, we've discovered, and the board has agreed to, that choice is good for our employees. That's why we have Dean and Mercy. So, as, as board president, I, part of my, I assume part of my responsibility is to take a litmus test of the board members and how they feel on, especially on this topic right now. And right now, it, it's split, and there's a couple in the middle that are waiting for the real numbers, the March, I'm saying March, the March information, right? On where Dean and/or Mercy are going to come in. Because a couple of them are not willing, they don't want to engage in this what-if-scenario debate until we know. Because we, we're, some of us are saying it's a half a million dollars. That's if, if, that's at the maximum increase, right? So, that, that's a point of view of what I interpret where the board is right now. Kind of waiting to see. And also, waiting to see, let me, let me put it this way, too. You know, Commissioner Huth will say, I'll just round up 10 million. That last year's budget was 10 million, and we don't think it should, we don't want to spend any more on 10 million. Well, we can't do that with power and light, or we can't do that with the price of education. We can't say, I'm sorry, WP and L, we're not paying you any more money this year. So, that means we got to go find it somewhere. So that means we got to go find it somewhere else in the budget? I mean, where do you draw the line on a particular line item budget and say, we're not spending anymore? So the reason I say that is also some board members and myself were waiting to see, are there other options by, other options other than simply focusing the entire budget balancing equation on healthcare? And some of that has to come from administration as well. But do we, there's risk, we've gone through this, a risk of throwing out options for budget reductions before we know what the real numbers are. So lending the degree with Steve Huth that are we a little premature? Why are we making decisions when the nine board members haven't given us direction what to do? If the board members, if five out of four say, you know what? Healthcare, we need this or that amount of money. Well, then, we know what the equalization part of the equation is. It's just now, what are the variables? And maybe that's kind of idealistic, but that's just my, what I've seen as of today.
My concern with waiting.
Yep.
For an alternative plan design, or alternative plan designs.
Yes.
Is we wait, so we request the renewal from the carriers March 1.
Yep.
It's the timing. And we'll be rushed in decision-making. And anytime things get rushed, things get missed. Right? Communication isn't as clean. People are upset. So my suggestion, I can't deal, you know, it's not my business to deal with WP and L. Right? Or salaries, or whatever else, you know, to balance the budget. Focusing on healthcare, my suggestion is having renewal pricing with where you're at today in plan design. And alternative. Whatever that alternative looks like. You know, there's two ways to save money in the short term. It's shift or share in contribution or plan design.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Just.
I think that because of what we've done, the work that's already been done, I think the board knows what those options are. It's just that the board collectively hasn't said, this is the amount of money on healthcare we need to change. We haven't said that. I mean, we know what the plans are. We know it's either going to be an increase if employees share of premium share or it's going to be increase in deductible. Or it could be co-pay increases. I mean, those are the options.
From an outsider.
Yeah.
Okay? I'm hearing 1.5 million, which is a huge number, given your spend. Okay? I'm hearing zero.
Yes.
Right? And then I'm hearing, let's just absorb the increase and not increase the spend. The difference between a half a million dollars and 1.5 million on healthcare alone is a huge difference. I mean, you can see it.
Yeah. One last question and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Thompson. What are options to... So right now, if, assuming the 5.8 increase, the district picks up about 65% of that increase. The employees pick up 35%. Pretty close. I know there's within a few. Are there creative or other options on how the employees can have a better, bigger share of the actual increase? Over like a one-year-at-a-time thing or, you know, I don't, I'm not wise enough to see how... You know, you could say, all right, this year, next year, it'll be, if you think 1% premium share increase is 110,000. To get to 50/50, it'd have to be 1% or 2%. So if you said, next year, it's going to be 88%. 88/12.
Sure.
Does that have to stay to make future budgets whole? Or can you do it, all right, this year only, it's 88/12. Next year, we're not sure what it's going to be? I don't know. I just...
Assuming that your budget stays static, meaning your revenue.
Yep.
Right? You'll be fighting this argument every year.
Okay.
Trend, trend in the marketplace is 8%. So inflation, healthcare costs, on average, go up 8%. So is the 5% rate cap a good deal? Yeah. Especially when you went from, when you shaved 500,000, or excuse me, $5 million from the budget in one year. And you have a 5% rate cap for two years. Is, I'm going to call it what I believe it is, is a sweetheart deal. Right? You will be fighting and future boards will be fighting and America will be fighting. Every employer is fighting over healthcare. Every employer is changing plan design to balance their own budget.
Dale.
I agree with Commissioner Huth, going back to his comment, that we need to get a consensus on what our goal is. But I'm not sure, some of us have enough information to agree on what that figure is at this point. And I know the next thing on our agenda is the survey, which I think we do need to do, for no other reason, to make sure staff feel that they're part of the process. Although I can somewhat predict what some of the responses are going to be. But I think that's critical. And there's several pieces of information I need as a board member before I vote. I mean, I've already said twice, I'm not going to give a staff person $1,200 increase here and say, well, give me 1,000 in benefits. I mean, I'm sort of going the middle of the road. I know we've got to do some trimming here or some plan design or cost sharing, but I'm not, I'm not going to support 1.5 mil coming out of this pot when I think there's other things we need to be looking at in the budget. So I need more data. I mean, we need to do the survey as soon as possible. But, for example, when I went through these sheets yesterday and then I also went through, again, what are the other districts doing? Because we always need to keep that in mind. This little balancing act. And I thought we're budgeting, I'm not sure what the CPI we're budgeting in for next year. Is it a half percent? Is it 2%? Which is going to affect our budget. Do you follow me?
We carried forward what we paid this year. We carried forward what we paid this year, 1.62%.
Which?
Which is a guess.
Right.
Placeholder.
Which may be lower. So then maybe. Right. There could be some savings there. Or I forgot the figure on, if Mercy indeed said, you know, we're nice guys and we're going to come down to 5%. What is that, what is that 3% figure there?
Differentials?
Actually, it'd be nothing because we're basing our cost on a lowest-cost plan. So Mercy drops a little bit, it doesn't matter. It would have to be, in this case here, Dean dropping. And I'll let you finish up.
Or Mercy going below 5%.
Right. Okay? Again, folks, just, I'll let you get back in one second. Mercy plan, that we have $100 deductible for, I have a $2,000 deductible. Add a 14% increase in my rate, my premium for the family is $800 more per month than we're paying now with 2,000 for my company. I guess, because of our buying power, what they gave us for a deal, it is nowhere near what's the rest of us smaller guys, small fry pay because we're not as big a buying power. So I'm saying to really think that we're going to get lower than a 5% cap out of Dean when the marketplace is double digits or more. He said 8%. I'm seeing, I got 14 last year. So yes, there might be a chance we shave something, but it's only if Mercy comes below Dean do we see a saving off our estimate here.
Or Dean comes below.
Comes below 5.
In the illustrations.
Right.
All right. So your figures have already factored in 5% here.
Correct.
Thank you for that clarification.
All the change might be is the employee portion might go down because they moved plans from Mercy to Dean. So part of their increase might go down if they change providers. But the district costs, as much as we can bank on anything, it's going to be about $500,000. I mean, yes, there's a chance it trims a little bit, but the reality is it's, that's what we got to, it's close we're going to get for a budget at any time of the year. I mean...
I'm sorry, carry on.
No. So I still need more information. I mean, I want the survey to be done as soon as possible. So then that would help some of us move, you know, more restrictive. I mean...
What's the other information that you need?
Well, that's why I'm looking at these two intelligent gentlemen for their ideas. And I thought, staff, didn't you have some suggestions?
As we look toward plan design and premium share, and philosophically speaking, is that what you are inferring?
Well, I think the survey's got to hit both.
Right.
Survey's got to hit both.
So are those the answers that you're, that as we move forward, that's what we're looking for? We need to have that piece, that piece of information coming forward to answer some of your questions. I just want to make sure that we are hitting on the information that you, Commissioner Thompson, are looking for. So if I can answer any questions or do anything that, as far as design is concerned or contribution.
But it's more about what you're asking, what our employees are going to respond to.
I want to.
Right.
We're going to make changes. I would like to leave the most pleasant taste in their mouth as you can. Nobody's going to be happy with the changes, but it's going to happen. And I do agree, you know, we're not just looking at the half mil this year. We need to do something for next year as well. I mean, the following years, so as I think Commissioner Sodeman said, we don't want to fight about this every year. Do you know what I mean? We need, wherever we go, we need to put a good nail on it. That's it.
I think, first, Tina.
Oh, that wasn't, I'm sorry.
First, Tina, we don't have to assume this is the only survey. So this is kind of a narrowing survey. All right? I think that we have, we have people who have suggested, rightfully so, we should look at whether or not a single carrier is something that staff would be interested in. I suspect you're going to get a response that says, no, I don't want to be forced to choose, to go to whoever is the cheapest. I want to go to and retain my own doctors. So however, we ask that question. David, I think that you are correct that 1.5 is a huge number. But the reason that this committee asked for scenarios of 0, 500,000, a million, and 1.5 so that everyone in the public understood what the impact could be and whether you want to say we need to raise 1.5 million, 2 million, 3 million, 10 million, whatever the number is. This is one of the largest areas that the district spends money in. And it's nearly $10 million. So on the district side. I think that however we frame the survey, I did get feedback again from a staff person. We didn't share option 10, which had numbers in it that are slightly different from our previous meetings. So if you would look at that and see how that fits in matching up with the current things. And Carla is correct that we could save money on ER. We could save money on several other things. It's not huge numbers, but let's say we saved $100,000. Well, that still doesn't get us to $1 million of savings. If we stay at the status quo, we're going to save whatever the increase is. So the increase projected at 5.8 is $471,000 out of our, the district's pocket right now. And there's money out of the employees' pocket. I think the total was 700 and some thousand dollars.
750 round numbers.
750. So anything that we can negotiate, if we could get both at 5% or if the world were beautiful and the economy was great, everybody at 4%, that'd be awesome. But that doesn't change that it is an increase over the current year. So philosophically, we have to figure out, as Kevin said, where the board's at. If they think we need to contribute more next year, we need to help staff know that so that Dr. Schulte and her staff can say, all right, if we're going to throw another 300,000 into insurance next year, we're going to take the 300,000 out. Now, David, the projected board meeting dates in March are March 8th and March 32nd. And I guess we.
32nd?
I'm sorry, 32nd?
What calendar are you on over there?
Well, I just got back from Arizona this morning. So, and it was, and it was, 29th? Okay, okay. Oh, yeah, you guys can take spring break. So, of course, I just got back from Arizona this morning. So, and it was 69, by the way.
Aren't you on break all the time?
I am. Yeah. Here. What dates are realistic and what information specifically? The board needs to know specifically what you need to go into those conversations about rate so that we can make an informed decision. Because right now, we're at six scenarios and they're not going to be happy coming in with six scenarios. So, you know, be honest with us, what is prudent for us?
So contribution from a payroll deduction is easy to change.
Right.
There's no extra effort. It's just a matter of it's 83% or it's 88% or it's 93%, whatever it is. So that's not, we shouldn't focus on that. We should focus on plan design or focus on totality of savings. Right? What we're lacking, and it's the elephant in the room, is direction from the board on how much money you want to take out of healthcare. Is it cost-neutral? Is it saving an additional half million? Is it, you know? And there's, the two ways to save money is payroll deduction, which everybody spends that money. If you do plan design changes, it's disproportionate to utilizers. What I mean by that is if you go from a $100 deductible to a $500 deductible, and my premium share stays the same, as an example. Okay? And I'm not a utilizer. I don't use healthcare. I'm a 22-year-old person out of school. And on average, they're going to use less healthcare than a 55-year-old. They're going to be a happier camper than the 22-year-old is going to be a happier than the 55-year-old because the 55-year-old, on average, uses more healthcare. So those are the balancing acts, direction we'd like to have from you.
Carla, then me.
And I want to say, maybe the scenario with one provider, if you require all employees to participate in this program or, so they're making the decision whether or not to participate in the healthy employee program, if you make it mandatory and say, this X amount of dollars is what you're going to be paying. If you, you know, spouse and employee don't participate, you will be paying this much of a percentage. So that's why I still want these scenarios with the, as it is, it's not mandatory and they're not doing that. So let's see what would happen if we required.
It won't change anything for the coming year. If we don't do it, we'll face even a bigger increase. What you're talking about won't save us a penny for the next coming year. We need to do those things to avoid a larger increase later on. But that just keeps this number from going bigger. It doesn't reduce our current outlook at all. Am I correct in saying that?
And the objective of the charge for not doing the health assessment, the objective is not to collect money from people. The objective is to get them to do the health assessment.
That's another item we'll have in our next discussion here.
Correct. So while we're kind of on that topic, if you say, we're going to charge 50 bucks more for the employee and 50 bucks more for the spouse, the objective is not to collect the 50 bucks because in most cases, people are going to do the assessment because, you know, in districts, the average typically is 3% differential, meaning, you know, the... meaning, you know, 90% and 87%.
If you don't do the health assessment.
If you don't do the assessment, most people, over 95%, if not higher, participate.
Well, the county has, I think, maybe 10% of the people won't participate. They just will not do it, so they're automatically going to pay. And yeah, you're right, it's not to collect money from people. But participation is going to help overall for people staying healthier. And if you leave it up to the individual person to make that decision, then they're the only ones responsible for the increase in cost. They are responsible for their own destiny. If they're not going to participate, then they're going to have to pay. No, we're not relying, but there, there is a cost savings. If you can see how much the cost savings would be if the people participate and if you increase the ER visits.
There is not a cost savings to us for the premium year coming up.
Right.
Period. And there's not a cost savings going forward, but there will be a bigger increase if we don't. So your points are very valid, but they don't affect us one penny at this point for the upcoming year. It can only hurt us more if we don't do it for the year after. So I'm in full agreement that we need to get those assessments done, and that's coming up in our agenda item. But it does not affect us one iota at this point for this current decision for the, for the budget.
Then we need to be more creative. We really do. We have to figure out some big things.
Well, we're all ears, but the biggest things, obviously, plan design and premium contribution. Other things as far as like changing an emergency plan certainly are a small part, but they're a small part. And that's.
Let me, let me just throw a number out here. So if there's 940 employees on the plan and we surcharge them $50 for not doing the health assessment and 10% of the people don't do it, right? We have $4,700 a month that's collected, 50 bucks times 94, $60,000 a year, which doesn't change the scenario significantly, right? If it's 5%, it's half that. So that doesn't significantly change the numbers.
I'm sorry, finish up.
I'm done.
Okay. Dale, then.
All right, so go on back to the survey because we need to go forward.
Last item, you want to finish up this here first before we go?
Okay.
Okay, I just want to make last comment on this item here is, I think it would be incredibly irresponsible for at least the plan design to not take care of soon. Now, if we want to look at the issues, okay, what kind of budgets do we have? And we could either, as I think President Murray said at the board meeting, you know, one way is change the increases in pay based upon what the available budget. Or we could change the premium shares later on without affecting a big deal. It would be awkward. Perhaps some employees would be upset because they got hired based upon this expectation, got changed to that. But it'd be nowhere near as ridiculous as trying to change plan design in October. So I think setting on a plan design before the, you know, so plenty of time for the July 1 enrollment is, is a given. I mean, to suggest otherwise, I think would be a total confusion and a mess-up for our district here. But that's my opinion. Kevin?
Question about option one, plan design one, with all share to create 500,000, half a million in savings. For I understand this changes the premium share to 83.5. Instead of 90, 10, it goes 83.5, 16.5, right?
Which, which option?
Option one, plan one.
Okay.
And then also includes an increase of the deductible from 100 to 250. What is it, 100? What is that?
100 right now, for single, 200 for family.
Okay, right. Is that the only changes in that plan?
Yes.
Okay. So my question is, it says savings, right? Does that mean it, on top of the 496, and it's, it's an additional $500,000?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So the district is spending $500,000 less than they spent in the current plan year.
Yeah, we're going from 90, we're going from 98.45.
Almost 10 million to 94.
98.45, 077, and 93.48, 652. So that shows us.
Do you understand what my question was? We're not only, we're not only saving the.
Increase.
Increase, but we're also saving an additional.
Correct.
Half a million.
Saving half a million for the current year, yep.
So. Right. So we're not only, this plan not only balances the health line item budget, but also takes an additional half a million dollars from the plan restructuring to balance other portions of the budget.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I think we, let's go on to the survey then, I guess it is okay with other people. Next item, four.
Okay, so we've, we've talked about philosophy questions, plan design, premium share, and the discussion about going to a single carrier from two carriers being the three main topics at this point that we'd like to clarify. Correct? That is what I'm hearing.
I have absolutely no desire to go down the route of a single carrier. Because I think, again, although I've done it in a year on this board, I don't want to leave a future board with this problem of now we got one carrier only. And the issues you described, I think we have the Middleton model. We got two people competing against each other. We got Quisp and Quake. We got Pepsi and Coke. We got, you picked the analogy and are fighting each other from those commercials?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
I don't remember the first one.
Taste, taste great, less filling, whatever it is. But I'm saying, we got that advantage now. And to, to change that would be futuristically bad for the district. It might save us one year and make me look better, but it'd make my kids look worse. And so I think that would be a horrible direction to go, to go to one provider only, but.
Well, I don't support it either, but the reality is, the question has come up. And I think we need to ask the employees if they, and Tina can put a preface with the question that states that the advantage that David has explained about having competition in a scenario. But I think that 88% of the staff are going to say, no, we don't want to do that. Well, then, then we don't have to deal with it this year, next year, or the year after, okay? I can't imagine you're going to get the majority of people say, oh, that's a great idea. I want to, you know, 62% go to Mercy now. I want to go to Dean because they're cheaper. I, I just.
What's, what's missing from that equation? So if I said, you can save 10% of healthcare cost if you go to a single carrier, you're going to vote differently than if it's 3%.
And I think that's an important message they have in there, and not for one year.
Right.
Or two years, three years, four years, five years on out. We have looked and talked a little bit about some districts and other organizations that did go to that model. So I'd like to, you know, dig in a little bit more to why they did it and how they're faring now.
Yeah.
The issue though, Dave, is if you use a percent, that's not reality to our 1,400 employees. They don't know what that number is. They don't know how it's going to affect their pocket.
Oh, absolutely. I agree with you. It's a complex problem.
So, yeah, it's very, and, and although, you know, we want feedback from our employees and we, we always are seeking, we're trying to consult them. That's, that's our culture in the school district of Janzal. This is so personal and there are so many variables. It's employee, it's employee spouse, it's employee family. And until, until someone sees that reality, a dollar amount, we're going to get a, probably a generic response from our 1,400 employees. Although I believe we should be doing it, I don't know that that's going to direct us per se. I think it's going to tell us the same thing that we're, that we're discussing right now.
First of all, in previous surveys, one of the biggest things we always got back was choice, was it not? Am I misstating that? Is that correct? Okay, so we've already got some feedback heavily on that. It had to be more of a, like the other questions I wrote, philosophical. Would you in philosophy like to go to a single carrier? It could save us in the short term, but because therefore of, as you just explained, it could cost us more in the long term or years on the road. Keep it more of a generic question versus a specific because we don't know the numbers of what they're going to be. So it had to be a general, do you favor going to a single provider for short-term savings? With the potential that it could mean long, higher cost later on, or whatever is a fair way. Again, it's hard to write a non-biased question, but as much as you possibly could to make that clear.
Well, I think you, you just did. In the past, choice has been important to, to our employees. We're just verifying that that's important. And there is no guarantee, based on the increase of healthcare costs historically, regionally, it's anywhere from 5% to 15%. So is that something you'd like us to discuss with the carriers?
All right, I'm sorry, go on, Tina.
Okay, so then moving forward on plan design, some thoughts that did come through. And I'll just read this and we can kind of, you know, judge it from there, so to speak. Plan design refers to things such as the size of the deductible and the coinsurance percentage. When the deductible or coinsurance percent is increased as a cost-saving measure, it affects those who have claims and use the insurance more than those who do not. Currently, we have a very low deductible and the plan pays 100% of the claim after the deductible. Based on this information, which of the following statements best represents your philosophical view? Please circle one. One, all members should have their premiums increased by the same percent. Two, increases should be handled by having a combination of all rates increased by the same percent and changing plan design so that those who use the insurance pay a higher percent of the increase. Or three, all or most of the increase should be handled by plan design so that those who are using the insurance bear most of the additional cost.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Is that clear?
Yep.
But I'm not sure if, I'm not sure if the people that are answering the question are going to fully understand it as well as we do. Somehow you've got to write the questions like I was answering them with an IQ below 50. I'm serious. I mean, you really, I don't think we're going to catch the implication. I, I understand what you're saying, but I don't think the people in the questionnaire are going to catch that impact. I mean, it's pretty deep what you've got in those questions.
What we could do though, after this is done and after we talk about the premium share, on that survey, can be some additional questions that people could be asking. We could formulate those.
Yeah, I think it needs to be broken out, that question needs to be broken out into two, three questions. If that makes any sense, which is clear. Should families pay more than a single?
That's coming up.
That's coming.
Okay. This is, this is now, it's plan design and it's premium share, the two biggies. This is plan design.
Okay. And you're going to send us.
Absolutely, before we actually put it out.
Before we send this out, Dale, she's going to send it to us to look at, give some feedback. And the other, the other option after that is to send it to a small test group to see if they think it makes no sense at all and.
Absolutely. Okay?
Yeah, sometimes I get the two mixed up, like whether it's plan design or whatever. Like if they don't do the evaluation, we're going to sock them with 2% more in their monthly premiums or something? That plan design or cost share?
Probably neither.
Something, it's neither, it's wellness.
Right.
It's incenting them on wellness.
Okay, so moving then to premium share. The monthly premium amounts that are paid to the insurance companies are determined by the category of plan that the employee has. Single, single spouse, single children, family. District pays 90% of the lowest-cost plan for each category, which means that if two employees are doing the same job with the same qualifications and experience, that there could be up to a $10,000 per year compensation discrepancy if one employee has a single plan and the other has a full family. For example, based upon this information, which statement best reflects your philosophical view? One, providing that much more of a benefit to employee is okay as it is good to support families who in turn may also send their children to our schools. Two, we do want to support families, but the compensation discrepancy should be somewhat lessened. Or three, all employees should receive the same dollar amount for their health insurance and those that want to add spouses or dependents should pay for that on their own.
So low, middle, high, so two extreme.
Keep going.
So that's what we have for premium share right now. So if we break those out, simplify them, then I will send them out to you. You all can review and look at and send me back ideas and thoughts.
So give us, give us your timeline. You think by the end of the week?
Absolutely, by the end of the week.
And then we can give you some feedback.
Like to put it out on Monday if that's at all possible.
Okay. You want to put the survey out on Monday?
I do.
Okay. Do you have a test group that, that you're thinking about?
Yes.
Some individuals.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, so should we give us feedback if we look at it this week?
Well.
It's a start.
Oh, I know.
You know, and if, and if it comes back and it doesn't make any sense, we'll do another survey and.
I assume there's going to be some kind of introduction at the, the top of saying we need to, the board has got to do something on both, the design and, and cost sharing because of the increases. I guess I would be interested in asking staff of going from 10% to 12% contribution
Okay.
on the premiums.
Okay, we can ask that.
I mean, I'm looking at what the other school districts are doing to stay competitive again. And I know that some of them are doing a slight change there.
And, and she could use specific scenarios that David and Al have put together, right?
Versus some of these proposals are talking about going down to 83.5%.
This, this obviously affects more a philosophical viewpoint versus specifically changing this to this to this. To me, we start out with, what's, because I would contend that whether or not, regardless of the budget, if we were flush with cash or wallpaper money with, you know, whatever, that still, there's a pot of money and it gets spent either in salaries or benefits or, you know, there's so much money. If you push one end down here, it comes up over here. I mean, it's a dollar figure. And so to me, regardless of the spend, knowing how we divvy up those costs based upon, do we have users pay more of the cost based upon plan design? Do we have families pick up more of the cost because of that discrepancy? And how, how do we balance that out? To me, that question should be answered no matter what kind of budget issue we have or don't have. And then, once we get that philosophical down, then we say, okay, based upon your responses here, what about changing this, this percent, this, that percent, ranging deductibles here based upon how the employees view the philosophical viewpoint of how we fairly distribute the resources among our staff? You see what I'm saying there? I mean, I think it's.
No, no, fine. I think the important part is we do the survey.
Two, we get, work with it.
Fine.
So we'll have information back by the end of February.
Absolutely.
Pardon me, by the beginning of February.
Right, right.
So we're still okay with our timeline?
Correct. There are some questions or, or thoughts that have been shared with me that kind of go along with the philosophical viewpoints and discussions. I think I might just go ahead and add those in and share them out with you so that you have those as well moving forward. Okay? Are we good with the philosophical?
All right. Okay, we do have to, this is an important item, the health risk assessment, as we were discussing earlier, to move on this, I think relatively quickly and bring it to the board meeting. So Dave, you want to?
Sure. So typically, you do health risk assessments the same time of year. So the target is sometime in March to do the health assessments. And annually, we would do the health assessments. The question, and so we're asking for, I'll call this a trial period, meaning it's not required by contract to get the 5% in 2016 from Dean. It is required to get the 5% in 2017. So the reason to do this is, first of all, from a trial period, we want to exceed the percentages needed to lock in the 5% rate increase. So we might be less aggressive than more aggressive on the surcharge or the additional cost for not doing the health assessment. School districts get a high degree of participation at a 3% differential. You might convert that because you have different carriers with different premiums. It might be advisable to do a flat dollar amount. So it's the same across the board. Is it $25? Is it $50?
Per month.
Per month, okay, for employee and/or spouse. Per month, okay, for employee and/or spouse. You could start out with employees doing a surcharge for employees only and roll in spouses next year. Generally speaking, school districts get participation at a high, high degree with a 3 percent differential.
And what's, what is that number?
3 percent, that's 12 bucks a month for a single.
That would be in 90, 87. So depending on which tier you're under will dictate that 3 percent differential. My point is, in school district, in the private sector, it takes much more money to motivate people because compensation's higher, okay? In school districts, it's smaller from a compensation standpoint, and they're motivated by smaller dollars. So you could start out with a $25 as example for not doing the health assessment and see how you land, right? If you get over the percentage of people participating that's required by contract to get to the 5 percent with Dean, then you keep it the same for the following year. See what I'm saying?
So 3 percent would be 12 bucks, 13 bucks for a single, 40 bucks for a family. You're saying rather make it, maybe just make a flat fee for everybody to keep, keep it simple, if you will?
Correct.
Perhaps 25 as a low, high of 50, somewhere in that range?
25 bucks for employee, 25 bucks for spouse.
Okay.
The consideration is the administrative hassle of doing the percentage and the rate tables internally, you know, it's easy, at 25 bucks, you will get in the high, you should get in the high 90s.
200 bucks a year, people are gonna say for 200 bucks, I'm gonna do this. Okay. So they would say if you don't do an assessment by a certain date, regardless of whatever plan changes we make, you will pay up, call it, what do you, does it call a surcharge or not? What do you call this?
Call it what you wanna call it.
Okay, well, you will pay a fee, a penalty, a surcharge, a cost of 25 bucks a month starting in July if you don't do the sur, do the...
And the reason that it's relevant today, because the health assessments are happening, we have to tell them in advance what, what the penalty is if they don't.
It'd be a health risk assessment nonparticipation penalty.
Sounds good. The HR and PEP.
That's right, yes.
So does it make, does it make sense that we set something now and then change it in a year? I, I think oftentimes that adds confusion to our staff if we're changing things, especially if we're changing other things as well. I wonder if we just set what we want and then stay with it. And what's your opinion on incentives too? I mean, some might say that is the incentive, of course, and we've done that before. But should we build in some incentives as well? Feel-good incentives?
So is it stick or carrot?
Or some, both.
The, the challenge with carrots is the human psyche, if I take money away from you, you're more likely to react opposed to giving you money.
No, I understand that. I said a feel-good incentive too, to get us all on the same
plane moving forward.
I believe, I believe that there is carrier incentives to do the health assessment as well.
Okay.
So if they do the health assessment, Dean gives the employee some money, and I think Mercy does the same.
Oh, it does? We've talked about prior, my prior experience was with Aurora, and if we did the health assessment and you filled that out and you sent your information, they would send you a Visa gift card. I don't know what Dean and Mercy are, but I would, I would assume there would be likely incentives that would also occur. In addition to that, they will also offer a payback or a give-back on any healthcare or anything, or health fitness club or anything there too. So we will continue to look at that.
To be clear, some other nuances that are relevant to preempt any questions or preempt these questions. If a person's gone to the doctor and had their own biometrics done, there's a biometric exception for them, okay? So people wouldn't have to do
Right.
the health assessment. They could do it at their physician's office.
Right.
In the first year, I would suggest that it goes back to as far back as June of 2015, okay?
Okay.
Because it's, you know, I mean, you're, you're dealing with a seasonal business. In the summer, that's when people, particularly teachers, are gonna have their medical stuff done. So people can do that in their physician's office.
Dave, if the goal is obviously not to make the 50 bucks?
Yeah.
Okay. In your consultant's wisdom, if 25 is the low and 50 is the high, what would you sitting there say would be, is 25 enough to make it happen as far as the numbers are each?
Before you answer that?
Sure.
I move approval of a $35 HRA nonparticipation penalty for both employee and spouse.
Motion by Commissioner Huth that the health risk...
Assessment penalty.
Penalty.
Is $35 per month, which equates to $420 per year.
For both a single and a spouse?
Correct.
Could you second that motion?
No.
I'll second it. Okay, now, the question asked then?
I think that that's, you'll get a high participation on 35 bucks.
Which is the goal.
Right, I think it should be mandatory, as Carla said.
Yep.
To, to be clear, you can't mandatory if a person wants to pay the 35 bucks.
Right, oh, absolutely.
Right.
I just...
Yep.
Of course, I'm assuming as you talk about this, the benefit, you maybe will find something that'll save you thousands of dollars or save your life.
Absolutely.
I mean...
Correct. And inevitably, you will have someone that gets a diagnosis out of, out of the health assessments that they didn't know about, and it will save lives.
Which Carla has said multiple times. Right. It saved her life, so.
How did you come up with 35 bucks?
It's...
Probably between.
It's a...
I looked at comparables. I looked at the other information that Tina had provided earlier, and I think it's a reasonable amount. And I also believe that, I've, I've talked to staff, and they think that you need to have some skin in the game. And if it's going to affect our entire population who are insured by this district, they need to have skin in the game. So I would expect we'd have 96 percent that participate.
Any more discussion? Steve?
I have a question for Dave then. I said this at the meet and confer, and this is of utmost importance from my standpoint. Yeah, we're looking at some dollar savings here for this health assessment. When somebody goes to a car dealership and they have their whole vehicle inspected and it says, you haven't changed your oil in 20,000 miles, you need to do this, and I still don't do it, my engine blows later on, there's no action. It didn't force me to do anything. So we put these people on a health assessment, and it tells them the state of where they're at. And yet, they choose to not do that. What's the action? What do, how do we get people to take action? There has to be, to me, like some type of accountability. And the reason I say that, I want teachers in the classroom with their kids. And if that health assessment says to do this and they still choose to not do that, that's a disconnect. I want people that are working at the ESC that if there's something that they're, they've been told to do, that they should be doing that so they're in their position. It hurts us when we don't have somebody in their position. It hurts us in a number of ways. We have to have substitutes. We have to have backup. There's stress on, on other people for having to do additional work. How do we get at that?
You're making the argument to increase the dollar amount, in my opinion, where that certainly would suggest to me that a higher dollar amount would be relevant, okay? Because the, the action, let's say that you have 5 percent of the people that don't participate in the health assessment. You can review at future dates. Money incents people to do activities, right? Other ways to do it, education, right? So if people understand, and wellness is a culture, if you're one of those 5 percent that aren't doing it, and you hear about someone that's close to you in job proximity that had a positive event, you'll increase the participation in time. So there will be some people that don't wanna do it, won't do it.
This is maybe more simple, but so, you, we can reduce effects of diabetes if you were to lose 40 pounds, all right? And the person still says, I'm not going to do a darn thing to, to lose any weight. That's gonna cost us in the long run here. That's gonna cost that individual in the long run at some point. So that's what I'm saying. It, it's the follow-up piece to this health assessment that to me is, you know, is key to this, to make sure that they're doing that. And, and yet, I don't wanna breach privacy with individuals either.
In time, typically, a wellness program will progress, right? The health assessment's just the first step.
Okay.
So in time, if you want, if you truly wanna affect people's behaviors as well as health status, you will need to increase the volume. Health assessment is just recognizing the health issues. So in time, the incentive should be stronger and more directed so that people change their behavior.
Okay. Question, Kevin?
All right, just, just one other bit of information for Commissioner Thompson. When we, the other thing that came out of the review of other policies or other districts is some had a penalty that took you to 80 percent for, the district paid 80 percent, you paid 20 percent if you did not participate. So when David, when we look at all our scenarios, 83, 88, 90, where it is currently, if we stayed at 90 percent, 90, 10, and there were an 80 percent penalty, you'd be talking about a 10 percent penalty on each, and that's, that's far more significant. So by going to a dollar amount, it's certainly easier for staff to be able to manage that, and it doesn't hold us up as we move forward.
I'm gonna go to the bottom.
We need to vote on it then.
All right, on favor, moved us on to the full board with a recommendation of $35 per month per employee and spouse that does not participate in the health, health, health risk assessment plan, or what do you, what'd you call that?
Penalty.
Penalty, thank you. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign, passes three to zero. Other announcements or updates?
Four to zero.
Oh.
No, he's not on the committee.
He's not a committee, sorry.
He's just the president.
I can count pretty good to three anyway, get the best five.
I figured you weren't counting yourself.
I have just one to just update because it's something that has come up in past meetings. I wanted to make sure that I shared out the information on domestic partnership and where we're at currently in that piece. There, we have five, five domestic partners. They pay a specific tax to the district for being that domestic partner piece. And as we look at what those...
Figures to IRS.
Oh, it comes back to the IRS, okay, to the IRS. It comes, yeah, they have to pay in addition to that. So we're looking at figures currently to update those five individuals. They may choose to no longer do that. Let's, let's wait and see what their figures come back at with the tax, and then we can have further conversation about that. But I didn't want it to feel like it was just being left go and somebody forgot about it. I, we have looked into it, and as of January 1, we are updating the tax on that. I have made phone calls to all of the individuals.
Next, next, next agenda.
Next meeting, yeah, let's go ahead and, and that way we can look at real numbers.
Sure, okay.
So when is the next meeting?
February 4th, if I understand correct, was our, we decided to meet, that's a Thursday, if I recall.
Yes.
Okay. 7:30, same time, same place?
Now, I need to inform you. I set my personal schedule around known meetings and board meetings, whatever. And since the board has made a decision to move the board meeting the end of March, I will not be at that meeting on the 29th, and I'm saying that now because I'm a little bit concerned, we, when we vote in some of this stuff. I've already made plans to be gone on the 25th or 26th on. I will be back on April 9th. So I just wanna inform people so they're in front, but I had scheduled that before, this, which is, you know, here and there. But I am concerned, I don't want you people to sneak some important votes in when I'm gone. That's why I'm raising the question, or mentioning it to you. Not that I would accuse you people of doing such a thing, mind you. On that note, I'll shut up.
Good thinking.
I just have a request. And it kind of parallels what Commissioner Thompson said when
he was inquiring about a 12 percent. Boy, you sure? So, you know, we have page two and three on this document. One is the no change, assuming the 5, 8 percent, and it goes to the other option I talked about that has additional 500 savings. I'm requesting to see a scenario that's in between, that only balances the budget, only balances the health increase without the additional...
We can do that.
So it'll be a little bit of the deductible and a little bit of the premium share.
So most likely, it's plan design one with cost shift or premium share driven to zero, right? So we have a little bit benefit design change going from 100 to 250, and we drive the premium share, you know, so it's, it's probably 88 percent.
Right.
It's probably, you know, to give you an advanced number, it's gonna go from $100 deductible to a 250 deductible, and it's probably gonna go to 88 percent to achieve the zero.
And you're saying, because to go to from increments of between 100 and 250 is just not...
You, you could do increments, but now we're splitting hairs.
Okay.
And it also doesn't really align with our comparables? Because our comparables typically go in those numbers?
I mean, that's, that's where the industry is, right? The industry, $100, 250, 500. Generally speaking, it's not, you know...
165.
Yeah.
So you understand my request?
Yep, I understand completely.
Thank you, thank you.
And to, to clarify that, you could do that with plan design and/or contribution. I assume that going from $100 deductible to a 250 is acceptable in that scenario. And plugging or targeting the contribution payroll deduction to balance to zero. That gives you a combination of plan design plus payroll deduction. I mean, you could do it all on payroll deduction.
I, I understand, and that would be like 80...
Five points.
Five.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Dr. Sheldin?
Do we want to put a meet and confer on the books? Maybe after the survey before March? I see no, no, no.
Well, I, I don't...
Wait till February 4th meeting?
Yeah, I think we could talk about it February 4th, but based on the information we have so far, I don't think that until David comes back with numbers in March, that we're gonna have anything solid for people to react to. So...
I would agree.
I think later in March would be good.
Okay.
Probably not during spring break, but...
I'll bet you your school board salary that the March numbers are within minuscule points of this.
Right.
Oh, well.
Another safe bet.
But put on the February 4th agenda, talk about the meet and confer, just, just to have it as an item on the, on the agenda. Other things?
To, to clarify our direction, do you want, from a carrier perspective, each one of these plans priced, or do you wanna hone in on one plan or the other?
As far as plan design?
Correct. And do you, at this point, want single carrier pricing?
Can we, can we answer that question after we, we'll get the survey stuff back next week? Let's wait till we see what we get back.
Or that, that could be a progression, meaning this isn't working, we need to go to single carrier to balance the budget this year.
Steve?
I just have one other question. Is it been done in the past that we have three board candidates that are not current board members? I know they get information, I assume they still get information shared with them in writing, but if they were to request a meeting with Tina to go over this information so they had a better understanding as time progresses forward, can we go ahead and have Tina do that?
We do that. Actually, we have had a candidate that...
Okay, all right.
Requested meetings with a number of us.
Okay, I just wanna make sure...
So we don't run an orientation prior to them getting voted on. That was a change made a couple of years ago, but yes, we certainly would meet with anyone.
Yeah, this, this particular topic... Yeah, this particular topic is so deep. As Dale said, it would be, I think, appropriate for them to, if there were a way to schedule an hour that you could go through it with them together, I would support that.
I just want to make sure that we just do a wraparound so that we are completely on the same page as we move forward, based on what I'm hearing from today. Looking at a plan based on ER going up and HRA for everyone, and what any cost differences that may or may not have, that was Commissioner Cork's request.
The HRA, I'm sorry, the.
Health risk assessment.
Right, what's the?
ER.
The ER, cost going up, the deductible going up.
I mean, we're gonna research.
Just gonna put a plan together, just put the numbers in real quick to the spreadsheet so that we can look at what that looks like as a plan.
What I would suggest is those are rounding errors, right? We might have to increase the co-pay to achieve your goal on ER. So it might be, to achieve your goal as an example, it might be a 250 deductible, 80-20 with.
A higher ER visit.
Yeah, I mean, those are rounding errors.
I'm not, again, and if the H, health assessment, that is only additional, those who don't take it will pay into the district.
Right.
Well, we're not gonna know until.
Do that, okay.
So I'm not sure what the research there is for.
And we're voting on that next week, and that'll give us data down the road.
So I don't see the, what we're gonna learn.
Need to do that, okay.
Unless I'm missing something, do my.
I think we'll probably have.
If 10% of the people don't do it, it's, and you're only doing it, I suppose you could, it's, you're gonna collect a little bit more money in payroll deduction.
Right, but there's no way you as a consulting will tell us, oh, by the way, I'm gonna say it's gonna be.
Your guess is as good as mine.
I mean, we, yeah, okay, yeah. All right, thank you. So nothing to research there. Kevin?
Just on Carla's question, I thought she just wanted to know if we increased deductible on ER visits, what would that?
Right, that was the other part, I'm sorry, the first of the HR I was talking about, but you gave us a rough $30,000 figure.
But David was talking about changing the whole plan. I thought she just wanted to see that slide over.
I would just create the one visual example for Commissioner Cork where it has it laid out there so that we can see exactly what that is.
Of the ER visit charge.
Correct, correct.
All right.
Just with the ER visit. And then another question that had come up that I just wrote down, so I want clarification on it, is are we going to look at other health providers?
I would vote not even traveling down that road, but I'm not sure, I mean, this is a committee, can I think it?
I suggest just send us the survey draft, we'll give you feedback.
Super.
Okay.
That's what I have.
I assume our timetable is still.
Still to make decisions before May 1st.
If you are to look at other carriers, we're late to the game.
Yeah.
And if you, if you decided today, we'd be late to the game. If you decide a month from now, it's halftime.
I mean, the other providers are, what, UW?
So let's go through the providers.
We're talking about other providers, you're talking about single carrier.
Okay.
No, also other.
Yeah, she also.
No, we can't go to other providers. I don't remember that question.
She mentioned it, yeah, she did.
WPS, Blue Cross, United Healthcare, WEA, droves of other carriers on a self-funded basis, right?
Yeah, I actually don't support that either, because you can't do that now when you're under a three-year, you can, but it's not possible when you're under a three-year agreement with two local providers.
It's unlikely that you will see positive results.
True, every time I've checked my own company, they have always been higher because they don't have the presence in town. I mean, I just, I've always, they gave me a bid, but I was like, you're not gonna like this, so the bid, well, okay.
And at your current pricing, I'm gonna say that most of the carriers are gonna say, no, we're not gonna even bid.
Right.
We're not even gonna take the time.
So no, I don't want you to.
But I don't want to, you know, part of our role is to give you reality.
Right.
But if there's any question that that's not reality, we should be demonstrating that too.
All right.
And then the last item is timeline. We've discussed this a couple different times today. Are we on time? Where should we be as far as the timeline? Perhaps that's something we should revisit on February 4th as an agenda item.
I think we should for sure commit to, again, plan design changes, and hopefully President Mueller realizes that plan design changes, we can't change mid-year. Premium share, I would still be opposed to that, but at least it wouldn't be as drastic of a problem. So I think at least committing to plan design changes on our original timetable that's ready to be rolled out by July 1 would be.
If you're contemplating, by example, changing plan, excuse me, contribution mid-year, like in August or October 1st, there may be a regulatory concern there that we'll have to check out.
Please just let us know about that, that would solve the problem.
But one other thing would be helpful for me, Tina, is if it's not a lot of work, you did a beautiful graphic of the timeline and the dates. Can you go back and input like a fishbone diagram where we've already met? I mean, the benefits meetings met like 28 times, it seems like. If we can put those dates in so people understand how many times this has been talked about, the meet and confers, when David is projecting, he'll have some numbers if it's the last meeting in March, it doesn't mean we have to vote on it then, but if we have those in front of people, I think it's a, it's a good way to communicate.
Will do.
Thanks.
I'm just wondering, speaking about the board and getting consensus, if there's any value in taking this topic, say, the latter part of February, to the board to see if there's a consensus of 1.5 or 1 mil or 500 thou, which would then narrow it a great deal. Do you follow me?
I follow you.
So I'm just wondering if we need to schedule something the latter part of February, because you'll have the survey and this information and get a feeling, because the board is split. I mean, I agree. But I think that would cut out a lot of this other stuff we're talking about. It would give us much clearer direction, if you will.
So you're asking that Tina add to the timeline in the latter, the last meeting in February, a review of current status, results of the survey.
So target dollar amounts?
And target dollar amounts.
Yeah.
I thought I heard, maybe it's just from a small minority, that they wanted to know what the numbers are coming in, in March. So does the board think it could make that decision before the numbers from the negotiations?
Good point.
I don't, I don't think it's an action item. I think it's an information item, you know, I was pretty clear at the beginning of this meeting that I don't think we can spend more than we spent this year, because we don't have the money to spend more than we spent this year. So we have to have the philosophical discussion about what are our targets, and I think you'll have maybe a little better information from some of the other areas. It's just a conversation. I think it's a good idea.
I would encourage, if you have a target number, that therefore, okay, if not this, then what? Just, I mean, that doesn't mean to be challenging, but just, I understand that's gotta come from somewhere, so, want to see layoffs, want to see this.
I just have to respond to my dear friend that gave me a ride. I hope I can get a ride home.
Maybe. I'm already late, you know.
That we still haven't talked about any other possible reductions in the operating budget.
No, we haven't, no.
Right?
That's what I just said. That'd be the last item.
Okay.
I'm saying, so let's say some of us had a one versus status quo, I'd say, okay, if you're at status quo, that's fine, but then where would you find the extra difference? That would be the point.
And remember, we're not preparing the presentation for the end of February right now. We're putting the questions out so staff can think about what those questions might be we need to ask philosophically.
All right. Anything else? So February 4th, at the first meeting in March, I'm gone. I'm in Texas, so if you can take, if there's a report to give out, Steve, would you take care of that, so?
I'm the first.
In February, yeah.
You said March.
I'm sorry.
Which month are you gone? Somebody else getting married?
February, I'm in Texas.
February 4?
No, no, and that here, the board meeting. Which is what, the 9th? Yeah, I'm gone on the 9th.
Yeah.
All right, we are done.